I call the order, the special board of trustee meeting for December 12th, 2023. Would you please join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DiSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Fry?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
At this time, we'll move to public hearing to discuss the 2024 annual budget. Village clerk, would you please call the roll to open the public hearing to discuss the 2024 annual budget?
President DiSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
The village manager like to discuss the budget?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Uh, I'm very proud of this budget. This was a one that I won't soon forget, putting the budget together, but it was a, it's a budget that I can be proud of nonetheless. If you recall, when we met back here in October, uh, we did the budget workshop with the village board. And, uh, one of the big takeaways there was you wanted a balanced budget with no new property taxes. And tonight's budget is just that. It is a budget that fully funds all of our operations here. It doesn't raise property taxes a single cent, so the residents will see flat property tax in the village of Bensonville. Um, it has a capital improvement plan over $30 million. Some of the highlights of that is the new pressure adjusting station that we're going to build over on Church Road for $8.3 million, as well as the, uh, electrical vehicle charging initiative that we look to undertake throughout the village at village facilities, as well as, uh, the new state of the art playground that the mayor's been working on for the, uh, kids in town over at Redmond. So that's a big project. Playgrounds can be expensive, as we all know, as we all have learned. Um, but that's a, uh, highlight that we can all be proud of. Uh, we're also implementing the village's compensation study that we did this past year. It'd be, will be implemented starting January 1st. It's going to help recruit and retain employees here at the village of Bensonville and then create internal equity throughout the organization. And then, uh, there's also, mayor, your, your honor, your idea for the handyman blight program is also included within this budget. And the phase two of the theater ice cream shop restoration project is included with the, for the interior of the building. So that hits a lot of the highlights. Um, it's a balanced budget. It's no new taxes and it's a lot of good things that we're reinvesting in our community. So if there's any questions at the village board, I'm happy to take those. We also have, I also want to acknowledge, uh, financial consultant Dan Denny's is here in the audience, or here, the side dais with us. He helped craft the budget.
So if we want to pause for a second?
Uh, yeah, if we can pause for one second.
Somebody might have locked the door. Just want to make sure.
Shouldn't you have like Jeopardy music playing now?
Sometimes the push, sometimes the push bar pops up.
Yeah.
Won't you get a notice?
We're good? Okay. Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
So it's just, as I was mentioning, uh, Dan Denny's, financial consultant, uh, helped craft his budget with the village. Uh, did a great job helping guide staff through the process. So he's available for any questions as well as I am, and then the department heads are here too, if you have any questions from the budget book.
So if any person would like to speak on the 2024 annual budget, I ask that you please approach the podium and state your name and comment. No one? This will conclude public comment on the 2024 annual budget. Is there any further discussion on the 2024 annual budget? Board? Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the 2024 annual budget?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
President DiSimone? Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's seven.
Motion carries, the public hearing is closed. This time, we'll move the public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. Seeing none?
None.
There's nobody in the hallway right now, mayor? This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November 14th, 2023 village board meeting?
You have a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any, any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November 30th, 2023 special village board meeting?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
You have a second.
Are there any modifications to those minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $9,266,797.44. Is there a motion to approve this warrant?
So motion.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussions on this warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Under community and economic developments, ordinance approving a special use permit for a new professional office within the existing building at 611 North Illinois Route 83. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, do we have discussion? Curtis?
Yeah, so Perfect Express Core, uh, they're actually moving, uh, from within the village. They're currently over at 831 Foster Avenue, going to be moving into 611 North Route 83. Uh, our I-2 district is, uh, you know, in a general industrial district, so office uses are a special use in the district. It should be noted, these two buildings, uh, the 611 and the 631 just north of it are both, uh, primarily office buildings. That's what they, that's what they were developed as. So usually users coming through to, to get into these buildings are going to require a special use. Now, this is a, a logistics, uh, tight, uh, facility, right? So, but it's professional office only. So what we were worried about here is there's, these sites don't allow for trucks. So we put some conditions in here essentially saying that no trucks allowed, period. And we ended up ever finding or, you know, something there that was, you know, either trailers parked there, trucks starting to park there or something, that we, it's an automatic trigger to bring them back before CDC to review their special use. Uh, they, you know, they claim that they don't, uh, have any trucks and that shouldn't be an issue. Uh, we believe them. We, uh, think this is a good use for the property. Um, hopefully get some updated, uh, you know, facilities here. I think both these buildings, uh, are going on, through some renovations and so, uh, 611 will get some much needed work. Uh, the applicants are here tonight, uh, so if you guys have any questions, they're here to answer them. Uh, Community Development Commission voted unanimously 7-0 to approve.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is a revised traffic impact study for proposed redevelopment of 800 West Irving Park Road, Bensonville. I think this is just a discussion, correct?
Yeah, this is information only.
Yes.
So, uh, we had approved, uh, the CDC case for the new mixed-use facility that's going to go at the banquet center, that the Cascade site that we own, right? Uh, we, during that discussion, had a traffic impact study, uh, that was presented that we had some questions on and we asked them to revise. One of them was that the site plan that we approved didn't match, uh, the traffic study site plan that they used. So we made sure they went and revised the, the site plan, how, you know, based on our comments to match. Then we wanted to make sure that Eastview, which is the, the road leading into the site there on, on the west side, didn't need to be, uh, to include a left turn lane. Cause we are, uh, the village is going to be going through and widening that to make it a standard street here next year. Um, so this is, you know, it's obviously with this new development going in and the work that we're doing, we want to make sure we're doing everything correctly. Uh, so really, I mean, the whole traffic study is in there, but I did put the conclusion page on there if, if anybody wants to read it. I mean, the gist of it is, uh, with all the new information, all the correct information, you know, the, the study area intersections generally have adequate reserve capacity to accommodate the traffic estimated to be generated by the proposed development. The proposed access drives will be adequate to accommodate the traffic estimated to be generated by the proposed development. And an exclusive left turn lane will not be necessary at that intersection. So that's really what we were looking for. Um, even though this is a significant development, uh, our work with Eastview and then just the traffic that would normally be generated for the development, it's enough to accommodate at that Eastview intersection. So that's what we were worried about. Um, I think we got our answers here. We're comfortable with it. The staff's comfortable with it. We want to bring it to the board and make sure you're aware that we went through and did this extra work and made them, you know, revise the study accordingly. So, and Jeff, or Joe might be able to, uh, to comment at the end of the Eastview work, but, uh, we're, we're lining this up. I actually talked to the developer earlier today too. They're raring to go, want to get going in the spring. And I know we're working on that letting early too. So all this should be, you know, coming pretty quick next year, which is a good sign.
What is the, uh, problem or issue if we wanted to just add a left turn lane? Just cost? Mr. Village engineer?
Um, it'll probably be both cost and the width of the right away. Will be taken out Parkway in order to put the extra turn lane in.
How much Parkway roughly?
It'd be 10, 12-foot lane.
So with 187 parking spots coming out that one way? Seems like, I mean, I know they're not all coming out at one time. I get it, I understand that. But I just have some concern with that.
Yeah. So, I mean, some things to note, I mean, most of the traffic's going to be turning right regardless. I mean, it's, so we, I think we even asked them to do the splits according to that. You're not going to have a ton of left turn backup. You might have one or two. We, we feel most people are going to turn right, even if they have to go left. They'll probably circle around or something. And that's just going to be a much easier movement. I mean, it's similar to how JAM operates right now. I think we had some concerns about people getting in and out of there and taking laps out. And essentially, we've had minor issues. I mean, there's been no real issues getting in and out of that facility, so.
Okay. Any question?
Mr. President, would you want our engineers to sketch out what a left turn lane would look like?
Uh, if, if we could.
We can, we can do that.
My only question was, yeah, down the road, if there was, after this was all constructed, and then we noticed that there could be traffic issues. Is this something that could be changed or this is a permanent?
No, it definitely, the, the right away is there. We, again, we just take Parkway out, uh, to add that later. We like Parkway in general, but if the problem presented itself, we absolutely would be able to revisit it.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll. Oh, we don't have to call.
Information.
This is discussing, sorry about that. Moving on to number three is an ordinance approving amendment to Title VI Health and Sanitation for, for insect and rodent control. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Yeah, a motion.
Do we have a second? Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So, mayor, yeah, this is a, this is a directive from you, uh, that we, uh, obviously, we're dealing a lot, lot with this year. Um, you know, it's a combination of, it's been an unusual year. We had a lot of rodent issues in the village. And with our new cartograph system kind of really humming now, uh, residents have an easy way to let us know about it. So we saw a lot of complaints. We were dealing with this a ton. We were actually, so we took it upon ourselves, we were doing some rodent abatement as a, as a village, especially with the apartments, uh, and working with them. And then in hotspots, we were actually going out there and doing our own abatements. We wanted to tighten up our ordinances. We had some minor language in there about concerning rodents. We wanted to make sure it was very clear about rodent and insect abatement and infestations and how we could deal with it. And as you'll see in the ordinance, it actually leads right into, we already have, uh, abatement procedures in there, meaning now we'll be able to, if we had to take them to adjudication to help, really help with the issue. So the insect and rodent control, uh, ordinance, it adds a section into our, uh, it, it's immense nuisances. So it's the nuisances ordinances and adds insect and rodent control. So all structures and properties shall be kept free and clear of insect fes- insect infestation and rodent infestations. Sorry. Uh, all structures and properties in which infest, insect infestation in a rodent harborage is found, suspected, shall be promptly exterminated at the property owner's expense by a village-approved rodent abatement control company. Really, this one, we just want to make sure that their official rodent abatement control company is just somebody that we're just going to go and send them, say yes, these guys are licensed or whatever. That's sort of what we're aiming for there. And then all residential rental properties and multifamily properties will be required to have rodent abatement programs. And that's the big one for us, because that's where we see the majority of our issues. So we're codifying that, it'll kind of run it in tandem with our, uh, registration program, uh, making sure that they're just, they are, they're aware of it and that, you know, we're really hitting that head on. Cause that's definitely, the majority of our complaints are, are in multifamily and, and kind of rental around there. So then, like I said, it, our ordinance already included abatement of public nuisances. So this also, now that we have this kind of really spelled out in there, now we can issue, uh, uh, property maintenance citations and potentially adjudicate if the problem isn't cleaned up, so.
I think the important-
Said tonight, uh, for-
I think the important thing too is we're getting, this is a proactive ordinance, not a reactive ordinance. We're making all property owners put in rodent abatement plans. That way, hopefully, we can get our, our arms around this and add around this. This is not a problem unique to Bensonville. I think it's in the other important thing. I meet monthly with the other city managers in Dupage and everyone's experiencing this right now. So, um, I think this is on the leading edge of, of that and I am optimistic that it will make a difference.
Okay. Any questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Under Administration Finance and, and Legislation Committee, ordinance adopting the 2024 annual budget for the village of Bensonville for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024. Fair motion to approve this ordinance.
You have a motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, we have discussion.
Thank you. Um, I ran over the highlights of this budget during the budget hearing at the beginning of this meeting. Um, I'm happy to take questions. Again, the highlights are, this is a operating budget that is $21.5 million revenues and expenditures that are balanced without the need for new property taxes. So this was a lot of work. I want to thank staff. I want to thank the village board for your guidance. Um, I want to thank our, uh, financial consultant, Dan Denny's, for helping us craft this budget.
Does the board have any questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance adopting the 2023 tax levy for the village of Bensonville, Dupage and Cook Counties for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023 and ending December 31st, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
This is the sister to the budget, is the tax levy itself. Uh, like I said, there's a 0% property tax increase for the village of Bensonville. It's important to remind everybody, we all know this, but that doesn't mean residents' tax bills may not appear to go up, but they're not going up because of the village. They were going up because of other taxing bodies. The majority of everyone's tax bill, 70% made up by education purposes. Um, and that's where they're, we'll see variance, but we're doing our part here as the board to not raise property taxes.
Any questions from our board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, alternative revenue source, series 2023 of the village of Bensonville, Cook and Dupage Counties, Illinois, in an aggregate amount of not to exceed $2.5 million. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Um, I'll start with this graph. I think this is somewhat slightly unrelated, but this is the, uh, debt payoff that the village has been undertaking since 2015. I can see really ramped up there. Uh, we're going in the right direction. I know this is a big priority of the village board. Uh, just to take these numbers in, we were almost at 70 million. Now we're just above, what is that? 30 million. So, um, we're really making progress. We've almost reduced the outstanding debt in half. Uh, the purpose of this ordinance tonight, however, is a bond ordinance. We went out to market today for a bond that is funded by the special service areas in our north industrial area. This doesn't necessarily affect the residents per se, but we went out and we were able to achieve a lower interest rate for that bond. So we were able to achieve a saving, a present value, values savings of, uh, 122,000, which represents a six point, uh, about a 6% refund in principal, which is good, essentially reducing that bond's interest impact by 6%. So, um, this is business friendly to those businesses that were funding this bond.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Four is an ordinance amending the Bensonville Code, Title III, Chapter III, Liquor Regulations, Class E-1, to allow for the issuance of a liquor license to Cilantro Taco Grill of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Your honor, I'll take, I'll start off with this one. Uh, Corey Williamson, our deputy village clerk, did the legwork on it. Um, but we're, Cilantro Grill, which is going in, uh, very visibly on Irving Park Road. They need a liquor license for their business operations. So we were out of Class E-1 liquor licenses. What we're doing tonight is creating a new liquor license specifically for them. Um, this new Class E-1 will, uh, be available to them. Corey, do you have any details?
Yeah, so the E-1 liquor licenses allow for the consumption on premise of alcoholic liquor, beer and wine, um, when food is offered. So you're a typical restaurant establishment. It will generate an additional income of $2,500 annually. And if approved, the license will be, um, issued contingent upon their permitting, um, for the billing department inspections. Um, the background check for the applicant passed. The applicant is here if anybody has any questions.
Any questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed.
Yep.
Five is a resolution approving the extension of the water supply contract between the Dupage Water Commission and the City of Chicago. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
If the board recalls, we recently approved a new intergovernmental agreement with the Dupage Water Commission. Uh, the Dupage Water Commission buys their water from the City of Chicago. That their contract to purchase water from the City of Chicago expires March 19th of next year. Obviously, it's important that we continue to have water flow. Um, so what this is doing tonight is giving the, the village of Bensonville, giving authority on our behalf to negotiate with the City of Chicago on water for a period of an extension between 15 and 20 years.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Six is an ordinance of the village of Bensonville, Dupage and Cook County, Illinois, establishing regulations for unscheduled inner-city buses and the discharge of passengers to ensure the health, safety and welfare of residents and visitors to the village of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Your honor, um, at your, uh, direction, we recognize that there was an issue of unregulated buses dropping, uh, people off in towns that towns were unprepared to handle. Uh, so what this ordinance does, does not prevent that. What it does is make sure that if that is going to occur, it occurs in a orderly manner. So it requires that buses register with the village before they drop people off in this town. That way, it would allow a EMA response to make sure that everyone is safe and, uh, orderly in that operation.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Seven's an ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act for the village of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
I'd like to invite Marisol Leva to the podium, so she can do a brief presentation on the Paid Leave for All Workers Act.
Hi, everybody. Um, thanks for having me. So the Paid Leave for All Workers Act, um, is an act that was signed into law by the governor in, um, March. And essentially what it does is it asks that we provide leave time to all employees. Um, unfortunately, that doesn't take into account the financial implications, as well as the operational implications Um, unfortunately, that doesn't take into account the financial implications as well as the operational implications to a village or municipality, especially of our size and with part-time seasonal employees and so on. And so today we're proposing this ordinance. By passing this ordinance today, we're making clear that we do effectively have current policies that give our employees sufficient paid leave time. And so that that by enacting that today, prior to the law going into effect January first, um, essentially we're kind of abiding by that, if you will, without having to um submit to every detail of the law that goes into effect January first. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to discuss those. We did put in a policy as well. Um, that is going to provide paid leave time for our part-time employees, which we did not have previously. And so that'll be an added benefit to our part-time employees um of the village, which is obviously generous as we didn't have that before.
Bensville is uniquely exposed in this law because we have so many part-time workers by at the edge. Now, we have, I keep, I always go back to the fifteen-year-old figure skating worker that works two hours a week. Um, so this this addresses that. It allows us to get ahead of that January one deadline where we have to have something in place. So Marisol, thank you for all the work you did on this. I know it was a heavy lift and it was rather unclear throughout the year how this is going to be implemented, but I think we finally got our arms around it.
Any questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed.
Your honor, real quick, Marisol, I know you've got kids at home. You don't have to stay for this. Thank you.
Eight is a resolution authorizing the execution of a one-year contract with Best Quality Cleaning Incorporated for janitorial services at the village hall in a not-to-exceed amount of thirty thousand nine hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
I have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, do we have discussion?
We previously have been doing our cleaning of village hall in-house uh through a reorganization that no longer is occurring. Uh, we switched to Best Quality Cleaning, which also does uh great work over at the police department. So we're expanding that contract. They're currently cleaning the village hall now under my spending authority. Through the next year, that that they will exceed that spending authority. So this uh resolution tonight executes that contract with them.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Resolution approving a sales agreement with landscape structures to supply and install new playground equipment at Redmond Park in the amount of five hundred sixty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Sean.
So as you can see on your screen, uh, we've uh got a new playground coming in twenty twenty-four. Alright. The next three resolutions have to do with the demo excavation, uh, increasing the footprint of the current playground, insti- installation of a retaining wall, um, the installation of a small playground on former two-to-five-year-old site. Uh, poured-in-place servicing, the nice rubber-coated floor, so we're not going to be dealing with the wood chips. And then the large equipment and the installation of such. Um, the total project cost comes to eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, back in May, uh, we had a representative come out and do an inspection on our facilities and determined that the playground was beyond its useful life, um, that we and we should start making plans. At that time, uh, President De Simone approached us and said, what can we do about uh a new playground? And so the staff hit the floor running, got a bunch of different proposals. Um, two proposals were brought before the mayor and we brought it out to Johnson and Tioga Schools, um, where this was the overwhelming uh favorite. There are only two other uh playgrounds like this in the entire country. One's in Arizona and I believe one is uh somewhere down in Texas or or something like that. So um, this is a big deal. It's going to be a very large project. Um, by passing these ordinances today, uh, we will be able to uh open by June twenty twenty-four.
I do want to add that there are cheaper options in playgrounds, not much cheaper, but cheaper options. Landscape Structures is kind of the industry standard here. The current playground we have there is a Landscape Structures playground that has stood and served our kids well for thirty years. Um, so I expect to get another uh twenty, thirty years out of this playground to serve the next generation of Benserville youth.
So we did take this to the schools, kindergarten through third, I think it was? And obviously this was one hands down, except for that one, there was one boy that said he didn't want the playground changed at all because he had so many fond memories. He was like in third grade. He was literally upset that we were going to tear it up.
Way back when.
But this was, uh, it was, it was fun, uh, putting this to a vote with the kids. I think the kids had a good time. I know we all had a good time. Um, this is unique, um, so I'm excited that we're going to actually finally get it done.
I gotta give the mayor some credit too. We were sitting here bickering with staff and the mayor about what playground we should pick and you could see the light bulb went off in the mayor's head. He goes, why don't we go ask the kids what they want? And so we arranged it. So thank you to school.
And another funny part, so I said, you know, I told him how much it's gonna, you know, I asked him how much the playground costs and one guy said a hundred dollars. One kid said a hundred thousand dollars. So then I told him it was eight hundred and somewhat thousand. And I said, so how are we going to pay for that? And I said, I got this great idea. We're going to get a chair and every time you slide down the slide, you have to give me a quarter. So all the kids were up over and I said, whoa, 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 take it back. I don't want you guys running home. So we are going to fund it and it's going to be great and we're going to have the third one in the country and uh it's another thing that uh proves that we're we're on top of it all over here. So thanks again for all your guys' work. Thanks for putting it together and uh call the roll, please.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, the ones in
Any questions?
The ones in Arizona and I think you said Texas, how long have they been in, um, I mean, how long have they been up and running?
This is a, this is a newer design for Landscape Structures. Uh, I don't think, I don't know the top of the head. Right, so this is a newer design.
Oh, okay.
But like again, Landscape Structures is just one of those companies that has been around for a bit and likely continue to be around. So if the ladder breaks or the trampoline needs to be repaired, there's parts available for it. Some of these other companies won't be there next year. Yeah, it's going to be, the question was, is it going to be rid of the mulch? Yes, the poured-in-place surface or that squishy spongy surface that everyone likes.
Any other questions from the board? Sorry about that, board. Call the roll, please.
Okay. Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Two is a resolution approving the entry into a sales agreement with new toys, leisure products to supply and install play-bound poured-in-place servicing at Redmond Park in the amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred six dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
No, a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, discussion. This is the flooring, right?
Yeah, the flooring.
So this is the flooring that's used at all the parks nowadays.
What's great about this uh flooring is it's ADA accessible, so wheelchairs can operate on it.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Three is a resolution approving the entry into a sales agreement with Katie Landscape to demo and remove existing playground equipment and the installation of the new stone base and new retaining wall at Redmond Park in the amount of not-to-exceed amount of one hundred seven thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
I have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, discussion, the only thing I have, is it going to start now demolishing or we're waiting?
I'm going to reach out to them tomorrow and we'll get a start date uh as soon as possible.
That's if we vote yes.
Yes, you vote yes.
Um, one of the reasons there, this is a a cost is the current footprint of the playground. It's got to be expanded. Uh, we had to expand it to accommodate swings. Swings require a pretty big landing area. Um, so there will be a new ribbon curb poured there to to expand the playground surface itself.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Now you can make that phone call. Public Works Resolution authorizing the execution amendment number one to ca- to the contract with Tria Architect Architecture for the Senior Center Construction Oversight Services in the not-to-exceed amount of fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars for a revised contract amount of ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Second?
Second.
Uh, being a motion is second, Joe, we have discussion?
Let me, if I could just preface why there's so many public work items tonight, uh, this is the last meeting of the year for the village board. Because we're a non-home rule community, many of our contracts cannot extend beyond a year. So a lot of Joe's items tonight are re-upping annual contracts with him. Joe?
Yeah, so this amendment is a existing contract with Tria Architecture to oversee our senior center project. Uh, since the original contractor went default on the contract, Tria has had to use up the remainder of their existing contract to go and verify what was done, what needs to get done, do some of that work. So we're looking to start this construction project here shortly. Uh, we need to kind of re-up with Tria on their construction oversight work. Um, they provided a proposal for fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars. That'll get us through the rest of our um surety issues that we're dealing with right now, get us to the construction, reviewing all new shop drawings, RFIs, RFPs, things of that nature. So um, they've done well for us so far and we are anticipating that these costs will be assumed by the DCO grant and/or the surety uh negotiations. So it's staff's recommendation to approve.
Questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Two is a resolution authorizing the twenty twenty-four approved vendor list for the village department utilizing parts, equipments and services. Is there a motion to this resolution?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
There being a motion is second, is there any discussion?
Joe?
So our approved vendor list consists of vendors frequently used by staff um for multiple purchases throughout the year, but none of that individually over ten thousand dollars. So think of your Home Depots, your Amazons, um, we use Aero Construction quite a bit for asphalt. These are all things that we use periodically throughout the year, but they're not for one project. Overall though, they will likely exceed ten thousand dollars. So we put that list in front of you today. Um, this is a transparency thing that we started about six years ago. I think it works out well. It gives you guys the idea that these are contractors and vendors that we use routinely. Uh, we still will follow all of our procurement processes, so if anything is over ten thousand dollars, those absolutely will be in front of the board. Anything over twenty-five hundred dollars does typically get bid out and proposals received. So staff does recommend approval.
Other towns don't do this. This is something Joe and I came up with is purely a transparency thing, so we can tell the public where we're spending our money.
Absolutely fabulous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing to waive competitive bidding and execute a one-year contract extension with Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for sand and stone delivery and debris hauling in the not-to-exceed amount of seventy-four thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
You have a second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion?
So obviously Public Works relies heavily on the delivery of stone for our work and also the hauling out of all our debris from our water main breaks and such. Uh, Lindahl Brothers has provided this service to us since two thousand and ten. Uh, because they're local, they're reputable, they're very reliable and they're right next door. Uh, we'd like to continue to utilize this benefit of their services. Uh, the twenty twenty-four extension of the contract does include a three percent uh increase that is falling right around or below the current CPI. Uh, so we feel that's appropriate. Village budgeted seventy-four thousand dollars in the uh budget that was just approved, so staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing execution of purchase order with Cargill for the purchase of seven hundred twenty tons of bulk rock salt in the not-to-exceed amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
There being a motion is second, do we have discussion?
So this is our annual salt purchase from the state of Illinois through their purchase program. Uh, staff is seeking to purchase up to seven hundred and twenty tons of salt uh through this program. Uh, the cost is seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cents per ton. Um, the total value of the amount is fifty-six thousand five hundred. Uh, the state purchase vendor this year was Cargill, so that's who we go with. Uh, we currently are sitting and starting this winter with a full dome fifteen hundred tons of salt. So we will use the seven hundred twenty tons to supplement that if we have a bad season. Um, if we don't, we'll use it to fill the dome back up at the end of the season. So staff does recommend approval.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Five, resolution authorizing the execution of a one-year contract with Viking Chemical Corp for the purchase of aluminum sulfate in the not-to-exceed amount of twelve thousand three hundred twenty dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Second?
Second.
Being a motion is second, discussion?
So aluminum sulfate, or alum as it's called, is used in our wastewater treatment process to coagulate and help with the phosphorus uh removal. Um, the village uses approximately six, six thousand gallons of alum each year to keep our discharge below the one point zero milligram per liter limit that the EPA so graciously has put upon us. Um, the chemical market has been very volatile since COVID. We actually went out for a two-year bid. Uh, none of the three bidders that bid on it actually put a price in for year two of that bid. They decided it's, it's too hard to actually anticipate what that cost is going to be. Um, so we uh went with the lowest of the three that had the one-year bid, that was Viking Chemical uh at twelve thousand three hundred twenty dollars. Staff does recommend approval.
Why more than half, Joe?
I'm sorry?
Why more than half? Off.
More than half off of what?
I mean, the next bid.
Oh, um, it's a newer supplier to the area. They've, they're moving into the Illinois market and we're seeing that across the world.
Like a one-time hook you and that's it, now you're in.
It's a one-year contract.
It's a one-year contract.
We'll rebid it next year.
It's delivery.
Alright.
Any other questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Six is a resolution authorizing execution of a one-year contract with ASE Alani Scapes Incorporated for turf chemical treatment program in the not-to-exceed amount of twenty-six thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, do we have discussion?
So the village applies turf chemical treatments to our village-owned properties three times per year. Uh, this treatment controls the weeds and provides for a healthier gr- grass growth. Uh, as mentioned earlier, chemical market's very volatile right now, so we uh went out for bid for just a one-year contract um for the twenty to twenty-four application. Uh, ASE Alani Scapes submitted the lowest of two bids received in the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars. We did budget twenty-six thousand dollars for this in the budget and staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution authorizing a two-year contract with Central Tree and Landscape Mulch LLC for tub grinding services in the not-to-exceed amount of twenty thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so obviously with our aggressive forestry program, we take down a lot of trees and we do a lot of brush pickup for our residents. Uh, it generates a large amount of uh material. Uh, this compostable material uh can be recycled and turned into mulch. So that's what we do every winter uh over at one of our yards here in town. Uh, we've been fortunate enough to re- to have enough mulch, mulch left over to uh also provide a free delivery service to our residents for the last three years, which has been very well taken. Um, so the mulch uh is created by running all of that debris through a tub grinder. So this contract will actually reserve that tub grinder for the village of Bensonville for two years. Uh, actually starting this year, so we're going to try to get one in before the end of the year. Uh, and then another one for next summer or next winter. We received three bids with Central Tree submitting the lowest bid in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. We do budget ten thousand dollars a year for this, so it's within our budget and staff does recommend approval.
Shameless plug that you can turn your Christmas tree, this year's Christmas tree into next year's mulch by dropping your Christmas tree off at Public Works.
There you go.
Please remove all ornaments.
Any questions from the board?
Chainless plug.
Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved.
Oh wait, there's more.
The rate is resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to Al Warren Oil Company Incorporated to provide fuel tank rental and fleet fueling services in the not-to-exceed amount of two hundred forty-two thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion?
So the village operates a fuel station over at the Public Works facility for all of our village vehicles. Uh, our fuel tanks are supplied by Al Warren Oil. Uh, the way we contract their, we, we put the, the contract together is that the fuel price uh changes with their fuel market. So we pay Opus rack rate plus a ten cent surcharge. That ten cent surcharge pays for the delivery of the fuel. It pays for the rental of the above-ground storage tanks. It pays for the maintenance on them. Also pays for insurance liability should anything happen to those above-ground tanks. Uh, we've been using uh Al Warren Oil um since two thousand and ten, I believe. This latest contract started in two thousand and fifteen and we've been extending it each year. So it is staff's recommendation to approve.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Nine is resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order with T-Mobile for the GPS tracking services in the not-to-exceed amount of fourteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second, discussion.
So the village monitors about ninety vehicles with GPS. The service provides us with the ability to track our vehicles in the field for location, speed, idling, and it's also hooked up to the ODB two port, so it'll actually let us know if there are any trouble codes on our vehicles straight to our fleet department. We've been using T-Mobile government GPS program. It costs twelve dollars and sixty cents per vehicle per month, which is about half the price of the Verizon one that we used to be on. The total value of a yearly subscription is just under fourteen thousand dollars, and staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Ten, resolution authorizing the execution of PACE Paratransit Local Share Agreement for participation in the twenty-twenty-four Ride DuPage Program. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
So our Ride DuPage program is managed through the PACE Paratransit Program. Seniors and disabled residents can utilize the program that provides twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day-a-year service anywhere within DuPage County. Actually, in Bensonville, you also have the ability to go to the airport, so we made that an option for our residents. The cost to the residents is a two-dollar base fee plus a mile, one dollar per mile to where they want to go. PACE handles all the dispatching, they handle all the complaints. We basically just take the names and register them. The village currently has two-hundred-and-fifty-two residents that are registered with the program. The PACE does subsidize part of the cost. Our monthly cost has been about fifteen hundred dollars a month, so about eighteen thousand dollars a year. We did budget twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget this year, just in case some of the subsidy wasn't there or our ridership increases. So staff does recommend approval.
I want to highlight that we've been doing this for six years now.
About five or six years.
And the price has stayed flat that entire time. So in an environment where everything seems to be getting more expensive, we're able to deliver this program at the same price.
I think if you remember, we were up in the hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-thousand dollar range with the Dial-A-Less program.
And that only served Bensonville, yeah.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Eleven is resolution authorizing the execution of a GIS consortium service provider contract with Municipal GIS Partners Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-four calendar year in a not exceeding amount of ninety-one thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars seventy-two cents. There a motion to approve this resolution?
Yeah, motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so the village does participate in the GIS consortium each year. The consortium has actually grown to forty-two municipalities around the Chicagoland area, so we all share our ideas. They're all free to each other, so whenever somebody comes up with a solution, we are able to grab that solution and implement it here in Bensonville. The consortium provides us with a GIS specialist two days a week. That specialist is provided through Municipal GIS Partners or MGP. Before you tonight is our annual service provider agreement with MGP. The total amount is just under ninety-two thousand dollars, which was included in our twenty-twenty-four budget, so staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Twelve is a resolution authorizing approval of Professionals Engineering Services Agreement with Christopher B Burke Engineering Limited of Rosemont, Illinois for the on-call potable water modeling in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four in a not exceeding amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
So obviously our water distribution system is one of our biggest assets here in the village. It's one of our most important assets. We use this water to provide, we use it to provide water to our residents, but also to developments. We actually have requests from the tollway right now to look at modeling for the new bridges that they'll be putting in on three-ninety and four-ninety to make sure that we actually have the capacity to provide fire protection on those bridges should it be needed. So that's why we have this item in front of you today. Every so often, we do go back to Christopher B Burke, who kind of holds our water modeling system, to go and update it with our latest information. Every year, we do new water main projects. We got to put that water main in that system and see how that outcome is. So we use this a lot for our planning, we use it a lot for developments. We know we have two different locations we have to look at for the tollway in the next couple of months. That's probably going to cost us about ten to eleven thousand dollars. So we decided to go ahead and request a proposal for just on-call services. This is a per-hour rate with Christopher Burke to do these services. We wanted, we do anticipate we may get a couple more this upcoming year, so we wanted to get a contract in front of you so that we don't have to come back to you multiple times for the same thing. So this is, again, an on-call service. We will only pay them for work that we ask them to do in the hourly rate, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Thirteen is resolution authorizing extension number one of the twenty-twenty-two-twenty-three contract with Suburban Laboratories Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-four wastewater sampling and analysis services in a not exceeding amount of seventy-two thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
So in order to comply with all the regulations that we have through the EPA for our wastewater treatment plant, lab testing is a big component. There are multiple tests that occur daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, and annually. That suburban labs has done for us under contract for the last two years. In that contract, we did have the possibility of two one-year extensions. We're looking to execute the first of those one-year extensions in this contract. There is a three percent, again, cost of, or CPI increase included in the numbers that will bring it up to a seventy-two thousand dollar contract. We did budget seventy-five thousand dollars, I believe, in our budget and multiple line items for this contract, so staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Fourteen, ordinance amending ordinance number zero-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-three regarding the repayment of funds for the water supply pressure adjusting station replacement project. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so these next three items are going to relate to a significant capital improvement project that I mentioned earlier. This is going to be our biggest project next year. It's our church road pressure adjusting station rehabilitation project. This project will include the relocation and construction of a new above-ground, state-of-the-art facility that will take our water supply from DuPage Water Commission, do everything it needs to do to reduce that pressure to what our pipes can handle, and then distribute it to our system via the water towers, the underground storage tanks, and our pipe network. The current facility was constructed back in the early nineteen eighties in preparation for our changeover to DuPage Water Commission. It's located underground, and every time we go in it, it's a confined space entry. So our goal was to bring this above-ground so that we could access this from ground level and not have to do those confined space entries, make it a much safer facility. It's also going to clean up, quite frankly, a spaghetti bowl of pipes underground as part of this project. We have pipes going everywhere in that area just north of the old police station. It's going to upgrade our electrical and mechanical components, replace a fifty-year-old backup generator, and it's going to be constructing a new architecturally significant building on that parcel over there. It's going to fall right between the entranceway or between our water tower and Veterans Memorial. So if you can picture that area, there's going to be a new kind of two-story building that we'll construct there that will house all of this infrastructure. Construction is scheduled to start in early two thousand and twenty-four, probably a two-year process with all of our equipment delays that I'm sure we're going to have, and it's quite a significant project. If you recall, we also have to build this project while keeping everything else in place, because I can't stop water from coming into this town. So it'll be a very challenging project for us to do. The cost of the project, including engineering, construction, and the construction engineering, is just over eight-point-nine million dollars. We have applied for and successfully secured an IEPA loan to finance the project. As part of that loan, we also received one-point-six-five million dollars in principal forgiveness, so you can consider that one of our grants. The first item before you tonight, though, is an amendment to our original debt ordinance that we brought to you back in April. The EPA reviewed that ordinance. We've made a couple of small changes in how we were going to finance the project. We were going to reduce the overall term of the loan from fifteen years to ten years and utilize our TIF twelve revenues to pay for this project. So those are the two changes in the ordinance in front of you tonight, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, and the ordinance is passed. Fifteen is a resolution authorizing the award of construction contract for the pressure adjusting station replacement proj- Did I read that again? Sorry. No. I didn't cross out the right ones. Apologize. Sixteen, right? My phrase.
Yes, yeah.
You're for fifteen.
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 That's the contract.
That's the contract. The one before it was for-
The ordinance amendment.
I'm good, I was right.
You are good.
Sorry, it's been a long day.
They write the first thing.
Sorry, sorry. Fifteen, resolution authorizing award of a construction contract for the pressure adjusting station replacement project to William Brothers Construction Incorporated of Peoria Heights, Illinois in a not exceeding amount of seven million seven hundred forty thousand dollars contingent on IEPA loan approval. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
So again, this is a construction contract. So Williams Brothers was the lowest bidder when we opened up bids on October seventeenth. The total cost was seven-point-seven-four million dollars. If you recall, Williams Brothers is the contractor who actually performed our other big project about six years ago, which was our wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So we had success with them on that one. So this will still be contingent on the final execution of the IEPA loan. They still are reviewing the contract right now. They'll go over our ordinance, and then once they give us the final approval, then we'll actually sign and execute the contract. So what this item tonight's going to do is give us the authority to execute that contract when that's ready and also start a notice of intent to award to Williams Brothers so they can start putting together all of their insurance, their documents, their bonds, and all that kind of stuff for the project. Again, we anticipate this project to begin in early two thousand and twenty-four, once the EPA approves and executes our loan agreement. So staff does recommend approval of this contract.
Joe, what's the completion timeline for this one?
It's probably going to be about two years, so we're hoping to go through twenty-twenty, probably August, September of twenty-twenty-five is when we're hoping to have it completely done.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Sixteen, resolution authorizing the award of a professional engineering services agreement for the construction engineering of the pressure adjusting station replacement project to Greenly and Hansen LLC in a not exceeding amount of five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars contingent on IEPA loan approval. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
So the last item on the PA station tonight is our construction engineering services. We looked to Greeley and Hansen to provide us a proposal for those services. Greeley and Hansen is the contractor, the engineer that designed the facility, so they have the best knowledge of what the final product should be. We asked them to provide us with a proposal. They did submit that in the amount of five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. This contract will include project management, construction oversight, progress documentation, shop drawing reviews, progress meetings, preparation of record drawings, and final project closeout. So staff is recommending approval of this contract as well.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.